Call to order in the City Council meeting, February 15th, 2024. Langue, you lead us in the pledge.
Let's read the state flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
John, how did you set a timer on that?
Ms. Vicki?
I call.
J.P. Hodges. Louis Short.
Here.
Lane Tubbs.
Here.
Jim Adams. Melissa Choate. Ally Sugg.
Here.
Jim Lay.
Here.
Andy Eklund.
Here.
Attorney Prince.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Members of the press.
What the record show, we have a corral. First, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes plus excerpts as presented at the January 25th, 2024 City Council meeting.
Who was that?
Louis.
Make a motion to approve the minutes and waive the 24th.
Jim, second.
Second. Lewis Short.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of the payments journals dated January 1, 2024 to January 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of the street fund financial statement sanitation fund, general fund, community center, ONU, and miscellaneous funds dated January 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, you have your supervisor reports. Do you have any questions for them? Chief Hale is out tonight. He is at an ASU banquet receiving an award for the city of Heber Springs for us helping them with the police car at, on the college campus. Okay, we'll get to it. Unfinished business. The duck truck repair is $9,721.64, but I think it has to go somewhere else to have some other repairs, doesn't it?
I didn't hear that.
Okay.
I don't know.
You what?
Well, this is what it is for right now.
This one didn't work out for a while, right?
Yeah. We thought it was gonna be more.
Yeah, he said $10,000 last month, right?
Yeah.
But it's nine.
What else has got to be done?
I feel like there's, it's going somewhere else to have something else done to it, is what I remember. But you guys don't have to approve this invoice since it's under.
Under 10?
Yeah.
Honestly, honestly, what it is.
Yeah, I just have to have approval for anything over 10. And the sanitation ordinance is still tabled. Do you want, you guys want to discuss that at all?
No.
Wait till we get first quarter orders.
Yeah.
Okay, next, I need approval of the 2022 legislative audit. You should have received that in the mail. Thank you, Louis. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
All right. Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have ordinance doing business with Ronald Phelps.
What ordinance number is this?
This will be 2024-08 if approved.
I'll agree.
Thank you.
An ordinance, ordinance number 2024-08, an ordinance authorizing Ronald Phelps to conduct business with Ronald Phelps, describing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Be ordained by the City Council of Heber Springs as follows. Section 1, Ronald Phelps owns a business in which he performs the service of CPR training and is also the code enforcement officer for the city of Heber Springs Fire Department. Section 2, according to Arkansas Code annotated, section 1442107B1, the City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with code enforcement officer Phelps despite any direct or indirect benefit. Code enforcement officer Phelps may derive from said business. Section 3, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with code enforcement officer Phelps shall be limited in scope, time, and cost to the commission of CPR training services which benefit the city of Heber Springs and its employees.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to place on second reading by title only.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim Lay.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance authorized the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Ronald Phelps, describing the extent of said authority and for other purposes.
Make motion suspend the rules based on title only for the third reading. You got a vote on the first?
We have to vote on the first.
Excuse me.
Second.
It's okay. That's right. Okay, I got lost. You're right, Lane.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorized the city of Heber Springs.
Hold on, we gotta vote. Wait, now we gotta vote.
Now we do.
Vicki?
Louis Short.
Oh, okay.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Louis?
An ordinance authorized the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Ronald Phelps, describing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Make motion with approval.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have an ordinance doing business with Officer Joe Dowes.
I'll read you. Ordinance number 2409, correct?
Yes.
An ordinance authorized the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Joe Dowes, describing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Be ordained by the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, Joe Dowes owns a business in which he performs the service of laser grading and is also a detective with the Heber Springs Police Department. Section 2, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated, section 1442107B1, the City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to conduct a contract with Detective Joe Dowes. Despite any indirect benefit, Detective Joe Dowes may derive from said business. Section 3, the authority granted herein to the mayor to conduct business with Detective Joe Dowes shall be limited in scope, time, and cost to the commission of laser grading services which benefit the city of Heber Springs, specifically the Heber Springs Police Department.
Thank you, Louis.
Make a motion to place on second reading by title only.
Second.
Vicki?
Okay. Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
An ordinance authorized the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Joe Dowes, describing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Make motion to place on second reading by title only.
Second.
Thank you.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
An ordinance authorized the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Joe Dowes, describing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Make motion to approve ordinance.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Louis.
Louis. Okay. Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a hazard mitigation plan resolution. Yeah, they do it every so many years.
I think I saw the county just.
FEMA in the county.
Yeah.
You guys already done this, probably? Mitigation deal?
Who? Who you talking to? Oh. Oh, it was on the agenda last, for their meeting last week. That's why I was saying that.
Someone like to read it?
Yeah, what's the resolution number?
If passed, it'll be 2024-03.
Okay. Resolution number 2024-03, the following resolution was adopted by the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, on February 15th, 2024. A resolution adopting the Cleveland County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan with intent to participate and to work toward becoming a safer community. Whereas the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas recognizes that no community is immune from natural hazards, whether it be tornado, severe thunderstorm, flood, severe winter weather, drought, heat wave, earthquake, dam, failure, or wildfire, and recognizes the importance enhancing its ability to withstand natural hazards, as well as the importance of reducing the human suffering, property damage, interruption of public services, and economic losses caused by those hazards. And whereas the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, may have previously pursued measures such as building codes, fire codes, flood plain management regulations, zoning ordinances, and stormwater management regulations to minimize the impact of natural hazards. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management Agency have developed a natural hazard mitigation program that assists communities in their efforts to become disaster-resistant communities that focus not just on disaster relief, but also on recovery and reconstruction that brings the community to at least pre-disaster conditions in an accelerated orderly and pre-planned manner. Whereas by participating in the natural hazards mitigation program, the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, will be eligible to apply for post-disaster mitigation funds. And whereas the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, will implement pertinent precepts of the mitigation plan in cooperation with community partners and by incorporation of relevant information into other community plans and mechanisms where appropriate. And whereas the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, will participate in the evaluation or review of the plan after a disaster, as well as complete the mandated five-year update submitted to the State Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency for review and approval. And whereas the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, acknowledges that participation in the plan is voluntary, not mandatory, and can withdraw and not be eligible for said grant funds at any time or upon update of the plan at least every five years as required. And now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. The city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, hereby approves the regional multi-jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan attached hereto for the purpose of building a safer community by reducing natural hazard vulnerability. Is there a plan that's supposed to go along with it? Because it says it'll be attached to it.
It says it's attached.
Can I forward it in your email?
I didn't see it pointed.
That's all I have is just the resolution.
They may be sending it to us later.
We want it no matter what. I still be wanting no matter what.
Yeah.
We'll get it.
I just don't see the plan.
Yeah.
We can't really do the paper without the plan.
Well, they can see what's in that video.
Yeah.
This is one of those things that be over three months. Definitely.
No, it's a resolution. No. I guess they'll get the plan to us later.
So is it like a plan we already had in place?
Yeah, we already have a plan. It says to be updated.
Okay.
That's where we go.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's basically the same plan we had. We're just updating the resolution.
It has to be adopted every year.
Yeah.
Not every year, every five years.
Every five years. Yeah, and they may have updated it.
Yeah.
They just sent me the resolution.
So can we vote on it?
Yeah.
You can safely vote on it.
Once the plan is approved by, once the plan is approved by FEMA, a copy of the plan will be sent to you.
Oh, okay, so we don't have the plan yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a plan update.
It's not going to be on our feet to fire anything, just give, we want help.
Well, she's saying if there's a natural disaster, we can regret, request.
Or regret it.
Maybe, thanks from FEMA grants from FEMA.
You can withhold it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Seconding it.
Vicki?
Ready. Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Mr. Eklund, sorry. Motion carried. Next, we have an amendment to the PAC agreement. This is our agreement with TRAIN to do the updates for the community center for the state revolving loan fund from the Energy Office. That makes sense.
So what's the change? What's the amendment part?
There was some verbiage that had changed. It's really just some words.
And this, this amendment, it should be checked, under paragraph 1B, that should be checked, existing facility, we're not building a new facility.
I know this is kind of tied to like the splash pad and stuff. Where are we at on that?
Okay, they've been trying to figure out the funding and they're finally there. We closed last Thursday, so we're still trying to figure out the paperwork part.
And Nick is working on that.
Very diligently.
Okay.
He's been great at holding their feet to the fire.
Yeah.
And they've passed some emails along this week in order to get that process started. And so I think we may need to sit down and talk about, you know, the savings from this and maybe what we can do to get the trail paid. Because this is going to free up our bond funds to be able to do more within the scope of the community center projects, parks and rec projects.
Yeah, can we not go ahead and get started? Or do we have the plans like ready to go for the splash pad?
No, we're gonna go ahead and.
You said the design's almost complete in your.
Well, we're working actually with two design companies right now to get a finished product. They've actually already designed, I think both of them actually made two design for us already. We've asked them to make some changes. They kind of dragged their feet a little bit from Thanksgiving to Christmas and it was way slower than Nick and I both anticipated. So we had a pretty convenient call, I guess, Friday afternoon to really get after them and kind of put them down and say, you know, we're ready for this.
Yeah.
So we're hoping to get those results back pretty soon. But I feel like here, within the next month at least, we'll probably have a design nailed down for the splash pad.
So, so we're still thinking it probably won't be ready by the summer?
Well, and that was the issue with the phone call that we had earlier this week or last week was initially they were saying about eight months. And so we wanted it to be done, obviously, November. We were hoping it would be done by then and now it's kind of just drug out. Now we're in February. So what Nick and I kind of off the record, what we were thinking was we could do, we could get it done this year, still probably have some kind of grand event type deal. It probably is only going to be like sometime in September. And then so it will be a grand event and they kind of shut it down. This, like I said, just totally thinking freely and then it will be open to go next year.
Okay. Okay.
Talking about the train funds, the train contract, right? Like the money for all this. We got to wait till like it's five months before we can move forward, I guess.
Well, we can move forward now.
Yeah, I mean, we should have the money. That was bond money.
Right.
We have money.
We're talking.
We were waiting for this to go through before we started on that.
Right.
So.
It's all together.
We're at the bottom. I have to see what money, what others were there.
Yes, and then, yes, and then this came into play. And so this is where we're going to get our savings.
Right.
To be able to put more money toward the splash pad.
Yeah.
So we were waiting for this to close.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes.
The chance of having the information to us by our workshop, the 20th is.
That's like Tuesday.
That's Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, not good.
Just around the corner.
The turnaround times for whatever, with both of them, for whatever reason, have been way longer than we think's acceptable. And we're not sure what that was. But like I said, we've had conversations even earlier this week and at the end of last week. They were at least encouraging and they know, you know, we kind of put it on them real, Nick did pretty rough, I guess.
They did a small project for them and they don't. We're like the only ones that's made them the guarantee of the money to do it. We're like the only ones that actually did it.
For the Energy Office, yeah.
Oh, for Train?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For Train, yeah.
But this is like.
But it's not Train. It's the Energy Office.
This is like the, you're talking about, you're waiting on like the design of the splash pad.
Yes.
So that's like totally different people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we just want a design that's going to be long lasting, you know?
That's the people we're trying to give the money to and they're dragging their feet.
Yeah, exactly. That's kind of what was said as well.
Yeah.
Kind, as kind as possible.
Okay, can I get somebody to read the amendment? Doesn't matter.
We don't have to?
No.
All right, so it's just something for us to look at?
Yes.
All right.
It just needs to be approved.
Yeah, we'll need a motion to, for the mayor to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
We approve.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All righty. Ms. Vicki?
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, there's a Lowe's grant out there that we've been looking at. Josh, would you like to speak to that, the Lowe's grant? And then we're looking at maybe doing a pond, a dock at the pond trail around the community center.
So I was just, the mayor sent a Lowe's grant opportunity. And you can apply as many times as you want to for as many small town projects as you want. There's several things, things like an ADA compatible dock on the pond out here that we can also hopefully dig that deep, a little bit deeper one day, have fishing derbies and things like that at it. We want to do a dog park as well. We do have the fence that will take out the spring parks, so that would be part of that. But all the obstacles and the dogs we use and things like that, so the length of wood for that, we've asked, we're going to ask for, and.
Shade structures.
Shade structures for the splash pad. I'm going to see if that could be a part of that. We're also potentially looking at outdoor pickled sports, your tennis courts slash pickled sports. It would be shade structure for some benches and things like that. So there was also a nature trail that we would like to put back in this small wooded area that's also ADA compatible as well. So looking for just some funding that might assist.
Did I see something with a slide at the park?
So the slide has been, there's been a big crack in the middle of the double slide.
And is that new? Like, that was like a new one that we just put?
Since October, and we have probably put constant and clothes signs on it and people keep taking it off because that con like literally more than seven or eight times. The slide actually was supposed to come in today, but it did not, for whatever reason. I got a phone call yesterday saying it would be delivered by 3 o'clock today, but it never came in. So I'm not sure where it's at. Hopefully, we'll get that next week and then we'll be able to request a slot.
Cool.
They had just a big crack in it. I was afraid some kids wanted a slot.
This Lowe's grant, 100% or what is that?
So it was just, when I read over, if you remember, there were like categories. There was like a 25,000 below, 25,000 to 50,000, and then it was like, I think, 100,000 is what it opened up to. And they kind of just determined that, that it was a fairly simple kind of format they had, that you just apply, ask how close you are to your nearest Lowe's, things like that, and just kind of what projects you want to do in the community. So like I said, our intention is to, I think we have to do it by the 19th, I believe.
Yeah, it's pretty quick.
It's the last day to apply. But we want to just, like I said, apply for some of these smaller type things that we have going on, hopefully the city can come in and provide assistance.
So they just give us 100% of the money?
Yeah. Well, from my understanding, you read over that, like I said, they're going to say, we'll give you 25,000 for that, or, you know, whatever category. They might pump them all in together and say, well, then do $100,000 or, you know, something like that.
It's not matching.
It's not matching.
Like 80, 20 or anything? Okay.
Yeah, and all the projects have to be done by November of this year. So anything that we do get with that, we'll have to get on and make sure that.
Okay, I make a motion that y'all can apply for the grant?
Great. Great.
Can I ask you another question while I shine there?
Yes, sir.
You may have talked about it before, the spring park bathrooms. What is, having plans?
Well, we're looking to turn up with our new IT person. One, we need to get reliable Wi-Fi in the spring, in spring park, because right now it's spotty. But we got to have a camera system. I mean, the last, the damage that was done here recently, I just have to go back, it's around $4,000 worth of damage. And it's some kid that clearly just tackled, whoever it was, tackled the stalls and just knocked them all down to the floor. I think a lot of people just don't realize how expensive everything is. Like, I wouldn't think that a bathroom stall would be that much, but even the practice that you have, a bathroom stall about $300. So, you know, it's just since I've been here, which now has been about 13 months, I want to say we've probably spent over $6,000 just fixing the damages to bring park bathrooms. People, whether it be picking the toilet sensors to doing whatever, they're tearing down stalls. It's not the first time that they've tore down stalls. It's just, it's ridiculous that we have obviously a very nice bathroom, nice facility. Could have made it all stainless steel toilets and things like that, you know, and get back, but we didn't. People go in there and we lock them, I mean, they're locked at night, they'll be in the morning. It's just at some point in time, someone gets in there and they sad on those bathrooms for some, for no reason. So we have signage up saying, we're going to keep these bathrooms closed until the security camera gets up. Hopefully, right there where that pavilion is, we can put a camera on that and so we can at least get some photos of people going in and out, which I know is ridiculous that we have to do that. But it's just, yeah, it's just, yeah. So I'll unplug that.
Thank you, Josh. Ms. Vicki, you ready?
Yes, ma'am. Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lay.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next is the airport contract.
Is this the same amount as we've been due?
It is the same amount. Mr. Hurley is passing this on to his stepson. Craig's still working for him. Huh? No, 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 no. This is Nancy's son. Well, maybe. Wish you married Mike. Hey, there you go. So anyway, with the change of name, had to have a new contract. And I need you guys to approve the amount.
Is there, is there any way that we can, I mean, it's kind of a wet drive situation and it's the bush hogging between two acres twice a year? All the things I've got calls about over there by your house on the exterior of the fence is what I've had them on the call. Can we, can we not stipulate in here something about making sure that's?
Well, that's, that's part of that property, including what's across the street from that. That named Bush Hog.
Frequency of all their pieces required.
Yeah.
We asked the relative to their.
It says "or as needed" though.
Yeah.
Well, I think we had, I think we need to let them know as needed because I'm serious. I've had more phone calls on that than I have.
Is that as needed covered everything you have?
Well, that's why, that's what he's saying. It's maybe too black and white. It might need to be added in there.
And it's discussing the bush hog.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not bush hogged enough that it gets down to where it's, anything other than, A, it's still stubble.
But that's the majority of the. But that's the majority of the, uh, land mass of the bush hog.
22 acres.
So it's, so we're the new street, and then it's on right inside that, and then everything that's up against the fence.
I have a feeling.
Says approximately 18 cuts per year.
And they give them a chance to revise that, take this and have it revised again.
Yeah, because he's, he's only got the bush hogging the 22 acres twice a year.
Or as needed. Yeah.
Well, they say "or as needed."
It does say that.
I, I think this is fine. I think it just needs to be called to his attention that there are complaints about that particular area.
Well, and.
As needed to cover that.
Maybe it doesn't, maybe he has a machine that's big enough. That's not a big deal. Then maybe it case.
That's a problem though, because that big machine won't cover that ditch right there.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know. It seems to be, it seems to be difficult.
Has he seen this as the construction?
It's been moved since then, yeah.
Okay.
We got complaints at the end of last year, and it was addressed, and they took care of it.
So I guess we just need to make sure. So five then?
Yeah.
So Charlie's the one makes that add needed call or that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'm good with the.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Vicki?
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes, ma'am.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Motion carried. Okay, open mic. Anybody want to address the council? Mr. Shane?
While he's getting up there, I found out we have a Heber Springs lad who lives in West Point.
Yeah.
Mason Haslam.
Okay.
I think that's right.
Pass it down.
His parents can be proud.
Oh, they are.
It's not easy.
Yeah. He's a good kid.
A total of 394 responses. Now it is countywide, a total of 282 transports. Uh, there's a little bit more breakdown of information about where the calls were, but I wanted to provide that information to you. If you have any questions, um, either tonight or in the future, most of you have my number, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shane.
Hey, wait a second, Shane. So what we're looking at, the potential movement, is that where the 23 and the fours are coming on the call?
I'm not, I'm not tracking what you're asking me of.
Well, you, you've got this.
Yeah, it, uh, that's a, that's the call breakdown map for January of this year.
Okay, so that area that everybody, that you guys are talking about trying to move, one of the ambulances?
It's south, south of the city.
I thought it was north on the.
Well, there, there's one north that also, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, I can provide you more detailed stuff on the 20th. I know what you're, you're looking at there. There's not a lot of volume there, uh, for January of, of 2024. But I, what I'll provide you guys for your workshop, I'll give you a historical record. I'll go back to 2019 if you'd like. So you, it'll give you a better picture of the year as a whole. I mean, because that, that number, all the numbers typically dive down January, February, and then start creeping back up for.
Is that pretty standard for inside the city?
That, that's about right inside the city, yes, sir.
So that hasn't changed?
No, it stays pretty steady. And the reason the city stays pretty steady is because of the hos- hospital transfers. That, that, that all stays pretty steady throughout the year. That keeps the volume in and around the city, uh, steady. The, the zip code, there is a breakdown in there by zip code, but I will say that the zip code breakdown is a little misleading because that 72543 zip code goes well out into the county in about every direction. Um, but as you can see, I mean, the majority's entering in and centered around the center of the county, which is Heber Springs.
I have a request. I don't mean to say, sound petty, petty, but different shapes and gray don't really help a lot.
Need a color board.
We don't know what the heck this is.
So.
Blow it up a little bit more than going through the counties that aren't necessary.
The problem is when I blow it up, uh, and I, and I can blow up the city specific if you like that. Uh, I, I did this last minute. I apologize. I, I had this done about 30 minutes before 6:00. Um, and I was not near a color printer. That is why, on this one, I'll promise to do better in the future.
Maybe we can get a PowerPoint.
I can't, I don't know about PowerPoint. But, but, uh, I'm not that guy. I have to get IT involved on that one. Um, I can blow up, uh, Mr. Short, if you'd like to see a more zoomed-in view of the city, I can. Having, having the county map to zoom in anymore, I start losing parts of it, and, and because this was countywide data, I figured you might want to see the county, but if you'd like to see.
No, but this is great, but we've got other counties, you know, surrounding it.
I, I can't filter them out. It's just the way that the, the software's written. That's.
It's just hard to determine that. I don't care city or drastic or whatever. It's kind of hard to determine where.
Shane, could you email it to us?
I believe I could.
Okay.
Yes, I can. Can do.
I appreciate.
Yes, thank you.
No problem, and I'll try to get a color printer next time.
It's just the different.
No, I, I absolutely agree, and I hated to do it, and I thought it's either don't provide it tonight or it's black and white, and so I, I chose to go with the lesser of the two.
Thank you.
Bye, Shane.
Yes, sir.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. Uh, my name is David Leslie. My wife, Rachel, and Mel and I are part of a local ministry called Ambassadors for Christ. And one of our main focuses is praying for our elected officials, and I just wanted to let you guys know that we have been, and we'll continue to pray for you guys for wisdom, knowledge, understanding, discernment discretion, sound judgment as you make decisions for our city. And we'll be around after the meeting. If anyone has a specific request, we meet every Sunday, uh, four to five, and we'd be glad to pray for you guys.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Where do you meet? We meet at the Little Red River Baptist Association Building, on top of that. And it's open. Anyone like to join us?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, announcements. I have to give the other side a huge shout-out and a big thank you for all the work that they have helped with on the bank building. They have taken the carpet out, they've taken the tile out for us, and scraped the glue off the floor. It was about a two-week process.
Wow.
And I'm very grateful to have their help. Yes, yes. Yeah, I was about ready to give up, and they were like, wow, we can rent this machine. I'm like, oh, God.
They are also.
They've been fantastic.
They are also building a new shop that, like working wood and things like that. So if anybody has anything. I've definitely missed off some of that.
Oh, tools and supplies.
That can work out for them. They, they would love, I'm sure, something to do.
Great. Thank you.
They're, they're putting in a, a shop out there where they can actually do.
Like a workshop?
Well.
Woodworking?
Carpet.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm sure probably will end up being well, well, yeah, so.
Yeah, those guys are great. Okay. Okay. Making a turn?
Ronnie has to be.